Good evening, I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you will please stand for invocation and pledge.
Good evening, everyone. Gotta spray. Our Father in heaven, we thank you for another day. We thank you for life, for health and strength. We thank you for the sustenance this evening to do the business of our great city, Cartersville, Georgia. We ask you for wisdom and guidance and agreement as we move forward with the business of the city, and we'll be so grateful. We ask each blessing and all blessings of our Jesus name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the praise.
Let the leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This break rule, please.
Jerry Hyde Ward 1 here, Jay Stepp Ward 2.
Here.
Harry Rock Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox Ward 5.
Here.
Half Rem Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, Julia. First order of business is the approval of three sets of minutes that we have, two from August 20th and one from August 27th. Council, you were given these earlier in the week and had an opportunity to review them. Now would be the time to make any edits, and if there are not, a motion would be in order. Much to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the minutes are approved unanimously. Mr. Manino, why don't you get us started with appointments to the Historic Preservation Commission?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Two members of our Historic Preservation Commission's terms are expiring, Larry Gregory and Becky Carr. Those are three-year terms. Both are willing to continue to serve if reappointed. Your approval of these appointments is recommended.
Any discussion? Out of motion.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I do need to add one item to the agenda tonight. I'll entertain a motion, add that item.
So move.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Item is add. We have an ethics board in the city of Cartersville that has not had appointees for quite a while, and would like to handle that this evening to make that happen. By the way this goes is I have one appointee, council has one appointee, and then those two appointees get together and decide on a third appointee, and they would handle any ethics complaints that may come to the city. I believe they are two-year terms, Mr. Lovell?
That is correct.
Thank you. My appointee is Dr. Maurice Wilson. Just to make that public, he has agreed to serve, and I appreciate his willingness to serve the city. And I guess the next course of action would be for council to, I guess, recommend and then vote on their appointee to this ethics board.
I would like to nominate Bobby Walker.
All right, we might motion on that, or we might second?
You do need to, you can second that nomination if you want.
All right, so there's a nomination and a second to that nomination. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, so we've got that done. Thank you. We'll now move on to AZ 20-03. Mr. Manino.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This and all the cases on the agenda tonight dealing with the zoning and annexations have been properly posted and advertised. Appears to be no conflicts of interest, and they have been reviewed based on the exercise zoning powers set forth in our ordinance. With that, this is a second reading. This is subdivision, existing subdivision off of Jonesville Road, I believe it's Brookridge Subdivision. Approximately six to eight lots in this development. And with that, we had a discussion during the first reading of this, and the issue of bridge and bridge maintenance did come up. That also came up with Planning Commission. Planning Commission did recommend denial of this application based on their concerns over the bridge.
Okay. Other questions for Mr. Manino at this time? Thank you. Remember, we have two different public hearings. The first one will be relative to the zoning portion of this application. And so I will open up the public hearing for the zoning portion of this application, and ask anybody who wishes to to step forward and speak for or against to do so at this time. And again, Mr. Johnson, your name and your address.
I'm Frank Johnson. I live at 30 Lattimer Lane, Cartersville. I'm here representing the homeowners of Brookridge Subdivision. They would like very much to become a part of the city of Cartersville. I think since the last meeting, there have been some changes regarding maintenance of the bridge. As I understand it now, the county has agreed to maintain 50% of it, or to go 50/50 on the maintenance of the bridge. I don't know a whole lot about bridges, but I've looked at that bridge, and I thoroughly believe that bridge will be there long after we're all gone. So, you know, I can't see that there's a lot of maintenance going to need to be done on that bridge anytime in the future. And since all of these people that live there want to be a part of the city of Cartersville, I strongly recommend, strongly ask you to vote yes on this proposal. Any questions, or me?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Again, dealing with the zoning portion of the request, AZ 20-03. Anybody else wishing to step forward, speak for or against? And seeing none, I will close the zoning portion of the hearing and open up the public hearing for the annexation portion of the request, and ask anybody who wishes to step forward and speak for or against to do so at this time. Mr. Wilson, will you step forward, please, sir? Part of, I've got some questions for you. I'll keep the public hearing open when we do that. I do know there's been some conversations with the county relative to maintenance of that bridge, and while I know nothing about bridges, I know that you've done an assessment on that bridge, or your department has, and I'd like to know the departmental assessment of what, if anything, would need to be done to that bridge.
Right, yes. Public Works has looked at, or our director has looked at it as well as, and basically he used a bridge inspection report from GDOT from actually July of this year, so it's a fairly recent one. There was a couple items mentioned in the GDOT report where that would need to be addressed in the near future. Some of the items, some of those items would be sediment underneath the bridge would have to be cleaned out, or debris, as well as some joint sealing that would need to be done. There is a guard rail that may need to be repaired. Those items are, was appeared to be somewhere around $40,000, so that's in the near future. The other item that was a concern was the paint. It was, the bridge was constructed in 1971, and then it was, it had lead-based paint in it, so then it was sealed in 1999. So that is gonna have to be repainted at some point, since it is lead-based paint. It would have to be removed correctly and contracted out. That can be a very expensive item, and Mr. Sanders estimated that to potentially be around $400,000 if it's done with a sole bridge like that. So those are some concerns or cost items that we saw could happen in the near future. That's, I said, once again, this near future. Long stay out. If we look farther than that, you know, it could, if you ever had to do a bridge replacement, that would be a substantial cost, but that, the bridge structurally, I don't think there was really any issues on it as far as structure. Because there's some minor stuff, but that can be repaired.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Wilson?
Just a second. On these, I mean, I know that the only bridge we ever dealt with is right behind us here.
Church Street getting pretty expensive. The state or federal government help out with that? Do they ever get involved?
They, 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 so they're the ones inspecting all the bridges, and my understanding is that they make in with, so Church Street, yeah, we looked at that, and that's actually what we were looking to do was painting it. And it was, yeah, we were looking at four, four, I think it was high 400s for that, and that was low bidder. We bid it out. We reasoned GDOT pricing too with that, and so if I remember correctly, I don't know that we were getting funding on that. I could be wrong, there may have been some funding there to help us out, but we were still looking at that coming out of our budget, so.
Jayce, to answer your question, I mean, there are potentially some funding, it's just a matter of timing, and, you know, will it come up at the same time that you actually have to do the work? That's going to be the question. Any other questions?
And I did, Mayor, I'm sorry, speak to Peter Olson earlier in the week. Yes, they have agreed to enter, intergovernmental agreement, the city council wants to, for a 50/50 share of the bridge.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Wade.
Thanks.
Again, I kept the public hearing open for the annexation portion of AZ 20-03. Anybody else wishing to step forward and speak for or against may do so at this time? And seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and now council, I will turn it over to you for consideration of the annexation portion of this request. For further discussion, any questions? And if there's none, motions?
Keith, you're gonna have to re-educate me. You said, in the annexation process, we cannot put stipulations on the bridge itself to stay within county responsibility.
That, that is correct, because by law, when we annex a bridge or a road, if we own on both sides of that roadbed, then that roadbed becomes the responsibility of the city to maintain. If we only own on one side, it is the counties to maintain. Now, you could approve an annexation, and with a condition to that annexation being the intergovernmental agreement being done. I don't think approving an annexation with an intergovernmental agreement to be done at a later date is a good policy decision, because for whatever reason, those things may or may not end up being done. If you wanted to have an intergovernmental agreement with an annexation, I would recommend that it be, be approved as part of that annexation, and that both parties had already signed off on it.
Can I have one?
It's just been a verbal acknowledgement at this point. Now, there's nothing to prohibit you from tabling this request, you know, to the next meeting if you wanted to, to allow the city and county to maybe work out. I'm not sure if the county's actually having a meeting between now and then, but, you know, they normally have a meeting the first Wednesday of every month.
Typically, every Wednesday?
Yeah, so. But I know sometimes they're canceled or all, so I don't want to speak for their schedule.
I think, what's the, what do you say the return is? I mean, our military is...
Many, many years, because currently there's only two houses there and one house under construction currently.
Well, I think it's just unfortunate, you know. There's a bunch of city houses on, is it Crest Hill Road? Just down the road from this? Correct? Is that correct?
I think so, yes. Yeah, I think it is Crest Hill and that area.
I was scared there for a second, I thought there was one in here. And there's a bunch of houses in the city on the other side. I mean, so the formula is very unfortunate for these people, because obviously in mathematical equation, doesn't really work out. But at some point, obviously, we're gonna have to address the fact that, you know, you look at all that city out there, and then there's a big blob of county. So Jonesville Road as a whole is in the city income. Goes under the tunnel, and then, you know, into our community. So, I mean, it's just, to me, it's hard for me to sit here and justify bringing in five or six homes for a potential liability of a few hundred thousand dollars, pretty much here it comes pretty soon. But I think some kind of long-term plan needs to be discussed between us and the county as to how to handle Jonesville Road and a lot of these other roads, and sort of have a strategy in the future for people that want to come in and join our city, be able to do that without basically cornering them up, saying, when you can't come because we don't want your bridge. We want you, but we don't want the bridge. I think at some point, we'll have to work that out. So then I'd like, you know, obviously, as much as you can in the future, to get sort of a plan with planning and development and road, and with county to figure it out.
Well, I would say, councilman, if I may, I mean, the plan has always been, we don't do forced annexations.
That's right.
And people typically come to us, and if they meet the criteria, then we consider it. And sometimes it's fine, and sometimes maybe it's not as fine. So I don't know that staff, again, I understand having a conversation, but, you know, I think if I were to put my county hat on, I mean, I think there's certain situations where they would prefer for things to be in the county and not be in the city. But again, I would just think that, you know, the plan is that we don't, that when people want to be part of the city, we've got this process in place.
Well, I hear what you're saying. I know like, a few years ago, I think we've been on here so long, about even a decade ago, we did a donate hole initiative, where we actually went to people and tried to fill in those gaps. I know this is not one, but this is just a huge gap in there. I know Fulton Road's the same way.
You can look at the neighborhood next to it, and you see the great spots, those are all county lots.
Oh, wow.
Those are all donated.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm, you know, so I guess I'll get to my point here, Matt. At the time being, unfortunately, I want to make a motion to decline this annexation, but I think long-term, hopefully, at some point, we can get some kind of intergovernmental agreement in regards to that road, to maybe address this at a later time, but for right now...
So I've got, got a motion to deny, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of denial of the annexation? Raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And it is denied unanimously. I suppose there's no need to take up the zoning issue?
That is. That is correct.
So we don't need to take any action on the zoning portion since the annexation?
No, since it wasn't annexed.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move along, and the next two items, oh, actually, we do need to present these, Don. Mr. Manino, go right ahead.
Yes, thank you.
Z 20-03.
Yes, Z 20-03, and it is related to AZ 20-4. Those cases are part of the same project. With that, the applicant has requested that their applications be tabled until your next scheduled council meeting of September 17th.
Okay. And Mr. Lovell, with that being the case, we can entertain a motion to table these to that specific date without doing a public hearing. Is that a correct statement?
That is, that is correct. Though if any members of the public are here, you may want to inquire, because people do take time out of their day to come to these meetings.
Absolutely. Looking at the room, I don't believe anybody is here for that option. If there is, let me know, and I'll open up a public hearing for you. I don't see any of that. So we will, Chair will entertain a motion relative to both. Can I do the both on one item? Will you do separate?
Do need to be separate.
Okay, thank you. For Z 20-03, a motion to table that item until September 17th would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to table AZ 20-3 until September 17th.
That'd be Z 20-...
I said AZ.
That's Z.
I'm saying this is...
How long can it run?
You're going above and beyond.
You didn't go to the last...
It's okay. So I have a motion to table Z 20-03 until September 17th. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion to second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And I will move on to AZ 20-04.
And my comments would be for the previous case.
Thank you. And so Chair will entertain a motion, at the request of the applicant, to table this AZ 20-04 until September 17th.
Motion to table AZ 20-04 until the meeting of September 17th.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the item is tabled until September 17th. Thank you. Mr. Manino, continue on, please.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed text amendment. It relates back to a moratorium that has expired back, it started back in August 15th, 2019. The proposed text amendment to the zoning ordinance creates additional standards to promote compatibility in two historic districts. It does create two overlay districts that mimic the overlay districts of those historic districts. And with that, it was presented to the Planning Commission, who did recommend this for your approval, and this is the second reading of this ordinance. There have been no changes since the first reading.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Manino on this item? Thank you. And as Mr. Lovell mentioned, there are occasionally people that come to the community with an opportunity, would like an opportunity to speak. We typically don't have public hearings for these, but if you would please step forward, sir, I know that's why you're here, and we want to respect that, so your name and address for our clerk, please.
Thank you. Mayor and council and staff, I'm Boyd Pettit. I live at 21 Hillside Drive, and I don't know what the council's decision with regard to second reading of this might be, but I do, I'm here tonight to say that I live in the community, the Castle Cherokee District, and I want to thank you, Mayor and council, for giving some time where the folks could work through some issues with regard to development in these historic districts. As many of you know, I've been here in this community pretty much all my life. My family moved into the home behind where I live when, about a month before I was born, so a little later this month, I've been in this community about 68 years, so I want to say a word of thanks to you. We're very fortunate in this city to have the leadership now and the previous leadership that we've had within the city. I've had the pleasure of working with many of you over the course of years. I just want to say a word of thanks to you, and I do appreciate it. I'd be glad to answer any questions, Mayor, but main thing is to say thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you. All right, so council, you have before you this second reading of the ordinance for the, I guess it's T 20-02 in two overlay districts. Discussion or motions?
I'd like to motion. A motion to approve T 20-02.
I'm gonna amend that with the authorization to give staff authorization to number it, or he can have that discussion.
Oh, no, you did a wonderful job there, sir.
Thank you. So that, Councilman Fox, I'm assuming that's okay with the amendment to that motion to allow staff to number that properly in the ordinance? Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item. Alcohol text amendment. Mr. Manino.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is also a second reading. If you recall, this is a proposed text amendment to the alcohol ordinance relating to specialty shops, specifically the boundary areas where specialty shops are allowed. There was discussion during the first reading about a screwy boundary we had that didn't go quite to Stonewall Street, because we were using a 500-foot distance. We do have an ultimate, some ultimate language that actually extends the proposal to Stonewall Street from the previous, from the first reading, and that should have been included with your packet. With that, the Alcohol Control Board did recommend approval of this application, or proposed text amendment, excuse me.
Okay. Any questions for Randy? Thank you, sir. And the same courtesy I extended earlier, I'll extend to anybody here that might want to speak on that behalf of that, and if not, that's fine as well. Okay, thank you. All right, council, it's time for you to discuss.
Before we all get into our discussion, I'm gonna recuse myself of this vote, so you know I was previously forward about a whole, this time I get pertinent, I make a vote.
Okay. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Point of clarification, which of the two proposed ordinances are you making the motion to approve? The one short of Stonewall Street, or the one going all the way to Stonewall Street?
This current, on the expansion, going all the way to Stonewall.
So that is the one that's on page 143 of y'all's agenda?
Unfortunately, I don't have my full agenda to think.
You're, I just want to make sure y'all know what y'all doing.
Obviously, I have a shortage here. All the way to Stonewall.
All right. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign?
Aye.
And motion carries four to one. Mr. Porta, next item, please.
Yes, Mayor, this is a request for the cybersecurity assessment by Mulvaney Jenkins. It's the same firm we use for our financial audit. This firm also has employees that conduct cybersecurity assessments. We, our recommendation is to approve this not to exceed contract of $35,000.
Thank you. Question, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. We, with the city of Cartersville continues to participate in the community rating system, which allows our citizens and property owners within the city limits to get a reduced flood insurance rate. We, we're just, we're up for recertification for this year. It's annual recertification, and we're requesting the mayor's signature for this form.
Thank you. Any discussion? And if not, a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Hampton, you are up next.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Here today, from the Department, we're wanting authorization to continue with our traffic signal updates that we were all for during the visioning session last year. During the previous budget year, we did get three of those signals done on Old Mill Road, and we're ready to go forward this year with another three intersections. We're planning to use CBK as our contractor again, and we're requesting the $90,000 cost not to exceed amount, which is a budgeted expense, to move forward with that program. The next year, we'll have three more, and we'll be done.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Derek on this item? If there are none, motions in order?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Reinhardt, you are up. Give us good news.
Honorable Mayor and Council, I'll go and start beginning my talking while they're doing the slap on the wall. Tonight, we're gonna be looking at the June 2020 financial report. Remember that June is our official year-end. This report is being presented on a cash basis. As the year-end close process is completed, those financial reports will change due to entries that are made to reflect the modified accrual method of accounting. These items are such items are depreciation expense, nonaccruals, accrued revenues, fixed assets, so forth and so on. In the general fund, revenues increased over last June by $3.1 million. Expenses have increased by $1.2 million. Two areas of revenue that I look at on a monthly basis, local office and sales tax, have a decrease there of about $32,000. Billing permits and inspection fees have a decrease there of about $58,000. In the water and sewer fund, revenues decreased over last June by $3.8 million. Expenses increased by $13.5 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased debt service expense, and increased capital expense. In the gas fund, revenues decreased last year, from last year, by $3.9 million. Expenses decreased by $10.6 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchased gas, increased debt service expenses, and decreased capital expenses. In the electric fund, revenues have decreased over last year by $874,000. Expenses decreased by $1.8 million. This is due to decreased personnel costs, decreased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchasing electricity, and decreased capital expenses. The toll-mortar fund, revenues increased over last year by $127,000. Expenses decreased by $292,000. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. In the solid waste fund, revenues increased over last year by $506,000, while expenses increased by $132,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. And finally, in the fiber optics fund... And finally, in the fiber optics fund, revenues increased over last year by seventy-four thousand dollars. Expenses decreased by a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. In the cash position, you'll note, or you'll see that the total restricted cash, I'm sorry, total unrestricted cash increased. The reason on, on the other side is, is the total restricted cash balance decreased. The reason for that is I made a transfer, basically reversing the water and sewer fund from the, from the bond proceeds. Speaking of bond proceeds, that leads into, we have a newly decorated slide. Question came up over the last couple of days of where, where is the water department really sitting as far as net income or net profit? So what I did on your, on the newly created slide is I slid in a one line that basically says that as of June the thirtieth, two thousand twenty, there was about nineteen million dollars, actually twenty million dollars, of expenditures that were allocated or funded through the bond proceeds. If you back that number out of the actual, was showing as a, as a negative or loss, they actually had a nine point five million dollar net profit for the year.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I asked Tom to put that going forward, because it'll give you a better idea. If you recall, a few years ago, the council approved a bond of about fifty-six million for the water system, and just the way the financial expenditures show up every month, it shows that bond expenditure in there, even though the money's already sitting there for that expense. So until the audit's actually done, you will, won't see that adjustment. So as Tom mentioned, it's about, actually about nine point five million on a cash basis with close of the, our fiscal year, and as Tom alluded to, once the audit's done, it'll, all these numbers will change once the audit's done, but going forward on a monthly basis, this will show you where we're at until Bob gets these major projects done with, using the bond funds. This will be, which will be another probably two years, Bob, I guess, two to three years.
Yeah, eighteen months, something like that.
There you go. Any questions?
One question. So the squats, I know that we're always worried about that, that's not anywhere in here. How is that performing?
We have, we have three squats that are still open. Two thousand and three squats, which we're using to fund the Dolphin Ferry project. It has around sixty thousand dollar balance in it. The two thousand and fourteen squats has about four hundred and seventy thousand. Don't hold me to that, that might be a little bit high. I looked at it earlier today and I can't remember the exact number. And the squats two thousand and twenty, which we started collecting in February of this year, is have a balance of about one point one million dollars. There have been some expenditures out of the twenty twenty squats, mainly towards, I believe, most of those expenditures have been for the, for fiber related.
It's so far. And Jase, I was going to tell you, the percentage that that would be down over the previous year would be the same as shown for the local option sales tax?
Correct.
If, if that's what you were asking for?
Yeah, I was just wondering, so if this performed, I mean, obviously they performed the same.
They're, they're fairly similar. They're not a hundred percent accurate, I would call comparable, but they're fairly similar in the collections, and right now, we've been fortunate with the COVID, we have our sales tax dollars have not dropped significantly.
Not nearly as bad as I think you would have anticipated back in March, so I was really kind of happy to see that.
We hope it continues that way. Hopefully, hopefully, it will continue that way.
Absolutely. All right, any other questions or discussion on the financial portion? Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Is there any other business that needs to come forward, Council, this evening? If there is not, actually, I am going to say, football is back tomorrow night. How about that?
It's on TV right now.
It is?
High school, yeah.
I was getting texts while we've been sitting here, everybody's hoping to know what's going on at the middle school.
There you go.
What's going on?
Football, middle school football today. Carisville, Westwoodland.
I do want to take just a second to applaud our school system for the way that they've handled the reopening of schools. We've, both the city and the county, quite honestly, have done a, a good job, and fortunately, the numbers are, have been manageable and everything is going okay. The school system does have a plan in place for attendance for football games tomorrow, and as I, you know, as I'd like to say, I'd encourage everybody to be a fan and follow the plan, so that these kids can continue to play and we can continue to enjoy a time together in the community. I think of all the things that we've faced and hardships this year, I think one of the biggest things is, is not having the ability to get together and, and cheer together. So I think that's going to be a, that's going to be a fun evening tomorrow night for whatever color school you wear. We're kind of partial purple in this room, but again, regardless of what school, if you'll just follow the plans that are in place and ensure that we can have just as many weeks of that as we possibly can. So I just encourage everybody to do exactly that. That being said, if there's no other business, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute.